Good luck. Woo hoo.
You let me know when you're ready.
Thank you, Dave.
All good? I'm gonna call a meeting at seven oh two. Please stand for the first meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alex, you want to do your call for us, please?
I will. Robert?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
Libby?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
I declare we have a forum. Can I get somebody to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Alrighty. It looks like we don't have any unfinished business to address tonight. New business, Joey Claus, Northern Hancock County Area Chamber of Commerce to address the board and submit an event and location request for Fortville Farmers Market. Thank you.
Did y'all miss me?
Yes. You're welcome.
Alright. That's good to be back after all this COVID stuff re-flared. I feel like we were knocked out our game a little bit, but I have two reasons for being here tonight. First is just to provide the town and the town council an update for the NHA CFC, and then the second is a request regarding what we know as the Fortville Farmers Market. So, just a quick word about the Northern Hancock Area Chamber of Commerce. 2021 was a year of transition, and if it felt slow to some of us, that's because it really was. We took our time rebuilding everything. We wanted to do it right, and we had some success in the fall because we went more public with our name and with our events. We had a lively evening mixer with Jake Burgess at Fox Garden in August, and then in October, we did a ribbon cutting slash evening mixer with Fritz. That was really well attended. I'm not sure if that was because of our ribbon cutting or because of the free wine samples, but either way, we'll take the crowd. And then in November, we went over to McCordsville and did a evening mixer and ribbon cutting with the studio salon. So, I just want the town of Fortville to know that we are on the move, that the chamber is moving, and there is life there. We currently have thirty-six paid involved members from either local businesses or civic organizations involved in the NHCSC, and several more who have said they're submitting their membership dues and are looking forward to some of the activities. We look to announce a whole slate of activities and initiatives here in the next couple of weeks. Those will include more evening mixers, which I encourage you guys to come to. It's really just a connecting piece, and we've seen a lot of good relationships come about as a result of that. And then we're gonna be doing some learning workshops too, maybe some tax things here in the near future. We'd like to do some town hall style events where people can come and ask questions, and we're really trying to stick to our mission statement, which is helping people thrive through relationships, businesses, and organizations. So, I want to say thank you to all of you, and I've talked to several of you just personally for helping us through the transition. I wanted to let you know that the transition team is now considered the board, and we do have vacancies that we are considering. So, if you have any suggestions, you can let me know afterwards. Melissa Hamm, who serves with the Hancock County Love, Inc., has graciously accepted the role as president. She was vice president under the now defunct Fortville McCordsville Chamber of Commerce, but she was our transition lead and now is the president. Reason I'm blabbing up here tonight is because I'm the public relations director again, so any questions that you guys have should go through me, and then I can get you to the right person and give you the right answer. Of course, Benny's at Benny's State Farm, continues to serve. He has a lot of hats, as you can kind of see with his role in the community, but he's doing a lot of our financial work. And then Spencer Wood is our marketing and promotional person. And so, one of our main goals in the first quarter is to bring our working board up to eight. We are currently not paying anyone, so this is all driven volunteer basis out of the goodness of all of our hearts. But we believe we've got something good here. You can see in that packet, I'll just briefly mention, we did expand the NHCOC with the name change to fit the Mount Comfort Corridor, and that's for obvious reasons. So, we're looking for corporate sponsorships, trustee level membership dues from Walmart and Amazon to help pump some things that I think will be really lucrative to Fortville, McCordsville, and the developing Mount Comfort areas. So, are there any questions about that before I move on to the Fortville Farmers Market request?
I'm doing it. Sweet. Sounds good.
Alright, cool.
You did a good job.
Well, thank you. And we couldn't do it without you guys. I know you have all been very supportive of this, and I thank you for that. The second thing that I want to talk about, if you want to flip to the back page of that packet I handed you, you're gonna see a proposal for the Fortville Farmers Market. Now, the Fortville Farmers Market has been a staple in this community for over ten years, and Fortville Church and the Nazarene has been so gracious as to play host to that for many of those years. There was a brief stint where it was hosted on, not Southeastern Parkway, Vitality Drive, but it wasn't really successful there, and so they moved that back. That was all prior to me doing any of this. And so, I was informed by the leadership of Fortville Church and the Nazarene a couple months ago that they wish to conclude their hosting services for the Fortville Farmers Market, which we want to say thank you to them, and we appreciate all their years of being willing and gracious to host us. And so, just as anything with these things, this transition period is tricky, partially because we want to keep the Fortville Farmers Market, but we need a new host site. And I know, especially with Libby, I've had conversations with in the past, and for various reasons, we didn't want to move it, but now we feel the time is right to move forward with what I think is generally building a consensus about bringing it to the downtown area. So, you can see in your packet right there that we have selected for our proposal a nice central area that we think will not be any kind of liability, not any kind of distraction, or deterrent, or detour, but will actually increase foot traffic to the downtown area of Fortville. If you don't have the packet and if you're on Zoom, what I'm talking about is moving the Fortville Farmers Market to the new plaza area right in front of the three oh five wine garage, and then wrapping it around Noel Street, where there's generally low traffic, and even now, I think it's still closed with those barricades. And so, we believe this is gonna be a great opportunity to drive foot traffic downtown Fortville. We never want to hinder local business. We always want to be an asset and help drive up business in Fortville and McCordsville. And so, you can see there in the proposal that we have a dedicated core of vendors, but we would not bring anything in additional that would be in direct conflict or competition with our already established downtown businesses. So, the thing that we were doing at Fortville Nazarene Food Trucks would be a thing of the past. I'm gonna point you to the Mexican restaurant or Fox Garden, you know, just to drive up that. But we think it'll be successful there. We think it's lucrative for a lot of reasons. But I'm coming here tonight to request, obviously, because it is a logistical concern because it is public space, whereas we have the luxury of having private space at Fortville Nazarene. So, I don't know what kind of road closure stuff we would have to do. I don't think it'd be anything if those remain locked off. We just have to close off Noel Street, but that is my request, and I'm sure there are questions. Unless there's not, and you just vote yes, I take that too.
So, are you proposing from Pearl Street, right in front of the wine garage, all the way down to essentially Broadway?
Well, that whole highlighted area, I couldn't, I'm not that good with Photoshop. So, what I'm talking about is Main Street, where the wine garage begins, so where that barricade currently is.
Down to Sunrise?
Towards the back of Sunrise, not through Sunrise.
Not Maple Street, though?
Not, no.
That would all stay open. Okay.
Correct.
And all overflow would go to?
Noel Street.
Behind the wine garage.
So, where that V's off right there, that's where we would stop. So, from the barricade on the other side of three oh five, basically just all that space in front of three oh five and then wrap around Noel Street.
Okay. Have the business owners or property owners been notified or asked what they?
Well, I've been, I've been talking with Libby at three oh five, and she and I have worked through it, and she's had conversations with those businesses, and we don't think that there would be any kind of conflict. The biggest conflict I see is Sunrise, and they're closed at that time. So, I.
Well, and we haven't met the new owners that the car's closed.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't know what their hours are or anything yet.
And even then, I don't think it would be much of a hindrance. We wouldn't be using their parking lot or anything.
And they'd still have access to come in and out of their parking lot?
Yeah.
They'd have to exit through onto Broadway.
Yes.
And that was my other question. Is the parking is gonna be at Greenfield Bank and Lot?
I cannot officially say that.
I'm okay with, uh, Libby.
I was just gonna say, did you say what these and?
Yeah, it says it in the proposal. We would start the third week in May, and that is, we generally say the first week in May, but because of multiple board commitments personally already, we don't want to launch before we're fully attentive. So, we would say the third Wednesday in May through September, or not Wednesday, Thursday, every Thursday from that third Thursday in May through the end of September. And there are a couple other thoughts that go along with that. The ladies' night out is always the third Thursday. We think this would be complementary to that. We, and this isn't official, so this isn't part of my request. I may come back. But the cruisin' is always popular, and we thought on, not a women's night out, but maybe a men's night out on the first Wednesday of, or first Thursday of every month, excuse me, would also drive traffic downtown. The goal is to get as much foot traffic in the warm months as possible to our downtown businesses.
I thought they were gonna move that to Monday nights, because there's, is Tech Man open on Monday now, or on evenings?
In the evenings, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and I talked to Mitch, this is totally getting off your subject, about the car show, maybe our cruisin' coming into Noel Street off of his property, because he already has people that come there.
And if somebody's already in process of that, this is just brainstorming from the chamber's perspective anyway. If somebody wants to go and run with it, let's just work together.
Yeah.
We don't need to take ownership of it. Let's just coordinate times and schedules. But that's not part of my official request, so we don't have to.
Right. Okay. I'm okay with the idea. I like that it's, good a try, alright? Bring it down. I'm okay with letting you work out the logistics with Joe and Pat, Police Department.
Sure. I think it'll do better, because there's thirteen thousand cars go by there a day, so you'll get more traffic definitely, because some people going, no, you have a farmers' market that drives through the town. Will they, uh?
Are you gonna make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the request for the farmers' market as presented and allow the logistics aspect of it to be worked out with Joe and the Police Department.
Give me a second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. So, is it clear? I can post this on Facebook now?
Yeah.
Sweet. Alright, I'm gonna go hang out with my baby. Thank you.
Can we get a vote from Tanya?
I didn't hear a vote yet.
Bye.
So, bye.
Here, Lucas.
Okay, Joe?
Just a couple of quick things to let you know. The Broadway project is coming along. That's coupled with the toilet projects, the traffic light two west, the trail on Fortville Pike or Maple Street, the intersection improvement there on Maple, where the stop lights on Broadway, and then the Broadway corridor. That's moving along pretty quick, and we're supposed to be having a public meeting. We're gonna be posting that real soon, you know, in the newspaper, and try to get it out to as many people who can't get on our website, Facebook, and I'll try to keep the council and public in the know as soon as I have a date.
Can you say those four things again? I got Broadway, the intersection of Main, the trail on?
The traffic light two west and Maple Street. Okay, those are all combined together. The update on the projects as far as the water plant, we got a lot of stuff going on this year. March is gonna be real busy. We get the temporary offices set up, hop back here, first week in March, and we're gonna be moving out of here, and they're gonna start gutting this place. They're gonna start tearing up the ground for the water plant first week in March. I don't do any groundbreaking out there, and then also they're gonna be doing some stuff in the parks. The trails at the school, the portion out in front of the school campus and the crosswalks, that could start anytime after March. And I don't have the exact date on this, but Madison Street is getting resurfaced and new ramps put in from Broadway to sixty-nine. That's an indot project. That'll be what they consider a twenty twenty-three project, which still could be happening, you know, starting this year. So, I'll let you know here the dates are for sure. We've received the grant money from the IPET that we've applied for, and it's got nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Is that number you're looking for? That's for the valve and hydrant turning machine for the guys to continue to exercise these mechanical valves that we've got. The road paving grant, I tell you, I've got it submitted for the, for the indot funding, and we should hear sometime into April on that. The Duke has gotten the CSX on the permit for the electric meter that's gonna go in parking lot there for Main Street. They've gotten a permit. Everything's ready to go. They're just waiting for CSX to schedule a flagger for them to come out and be on the tracks when they do the work. So, hopefully, that'll happen pretty quickly. The lights on Main Street are still scheduled to be here February twenty-eighth. I keep joking that they're probably gonna be installed on the thirtieth.
Yeah, right.
Supposed to be, yeah. So, hopefully, the first week of March, we'll see, first couple of weeks of March, we'll see some lights coming. So, keep your fingers crossed. And that's all I've got. I think it'll pretty quick. I think I repeated this step over and over again, so.
I hate to see the rental charge on that light.
Yeah, later. There's gonna be a debate on that between us and the contractors.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Joe. I have a question for Joe.
Oh, yeah.
The ten-minute parking spaces, when will those be gonna dare complain again?
I know. She's contacting me directly. I mean, we're discussing. I told her I'd get her some temporary signs put up. The contractors are coming back to work on Main Street, putting the lights up. They've gotta move some other signs around, and they have to cord the sidewalk poles and the sidewalk to hold the poles. So, I was waiting for them to come back. Unfortunately, it's, just like everything else, it seemed like it's taking longer and longer to get here. I told her I'd get her some temporary signs put up, and I know the guys have been working on building some temporary bases to set up.
What businesses that you're talking to?
I'm sorry, muzzies?
Muzzies, okay. Okay.
That's your request, I'm.
Have there just been a lot of complaints from?
Yeah.
Have we thought about, like, a different location for the ten-minute parking, or is that the best spot? Because I always see people pull up in those spots, like the first spot by Jennifer's on Stat Street, and the first spot by Randy's office, and they'll pop out and go in. And I thought, that's, that's easier to me to pull up there than.
Yeah, I don't park wherever they can. We've actually, we had to space them. I know before they were staggered, and I tried to get two places right next to each other, but unfortunately, with the way the streetlights are in there and the trees, I had to space them out again, so there'd be one in front of the muzzies, and there'd be one in front of the Chinese restaurant. So, they had to carry on as well. So, these small roads will happen. I think it's ten or fifteen.
So, you don't know when those will be?
I'd love to see the temporary signs up maybe this week.
Next week?
Just get them next week. Well, I'm trying to, without spending a bunch of money to buy a base, I don't want to put something up there if the wind's gonna blow and hit a car, and.
No.
And we have a sign that's constantly damaged.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
One other thing I will comment, and I could take you guys an email. This will probably be the last month that we'll be operating out of this room, and starting in March, we're gonna try to move all of our electronic stuff out to the Lions Club and start holding our council, planning commission, BZA, RDC, all those meetings we have on there. So, please come and join us in the fall.
Adam?
Yes, good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlekowski, the planning and building director for the town. I sent you all the twenty twenty-one year-end report on the planning and building activity in the town. I just wanted to hit some key points for the record. So, in twenty twenty-one, we issued one hundred and thirteen new single-family residential permits, and that's up from ninety-nine in twenty twenty. If you look back to twenty seventeen, it's been a pretty steady increment upwards. Of course, that's not surprising information. In twenty twenty-one, the plan commission looked at seventeen cases. BZA had eleven. On the revenue side of things, our department collected a little over one hundred and eleven thousand dollars in permit revenue, and that's in its second year of existence in separation with the county, and that's up from ninety-five thousand that was collected back in twenty twenty. So, that's been an upward swing, which is good. And so, the money covers the salaries of the director, the part-time billing inspector, and in turn, when we have them, year sheet, and office supplies, educational expenses, and of course, any additional revenue that's generated beyond that and just goes to the general fund. And again, it's, it's really important to note that that's all new revenue, that prior to twenty twenty, it was all being collected by the county. We did a hundred and seventy-one permits of all types in twenty twenty-one. We've seen continued growth in the single-family building permit realm, as I mentioned. Buildout was completed in Windstone after really a decade of development, and all the permits have been issued in Park Creek. Mount Vernon North, which has been a well-received project using our PUD standards, continues to see new homes. I think to date, we've issued in twenty twenty, over twenty permits. In twenty twenty-one, there were eighty-one permits. So, just over a hundred permits have already been issued in that neighborhood alone. So, they're already about a third completed. And I think for this year, it's certainly subject to continued single-family market strength, that we would expect a fair amount of permits to be generated in Mount Vernon North, which is D.R. Horton, and Northwest Fortville, which is under development right now. That would be David Wheatley Homes and Ryan Homes. And then this year, it's also possible that the Buyers Estates Project moves forward, which would be located east of Fortville Pike, south of the Little Town area, and that would be Old House Homes. And then Joe had mentioned about the trail projects, also about Main Street, where we're at with that. So, good news is, as I said before, there's, there's definitely enough, more than enough work to keep us busy. I think it's good quality development, and, you know, we just want to make sure that really every project that comes in, whether big or small, is, functions as a good building block to continue in good standards for the town, making it a great place. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to be the parks manager for the record. As far as the parks are concerned, I don't have much in terms of physical activity in the park. It's been pretty quiet, obviously, with the snow and things like that. We have a lot of people that were sledding. There's some housekeeping stuff that I like to kind of talk about for a couple of minutes. One, the Tree City, I got an email the other day, the Tree City stuff for twenty twenty-two has been approved. So, when the time comes, I'll get the proper paperwork to the people that need to sign it, and we'll read the declaration like we usually do. I think it's Arbor Day every year-ish, April. So, that's done and approved for the year. We do have like two hundred and fifty trees ordered for this year. Fifty to seventy-five, those are gonna go over to Fortville Elementary. I'm working with a teacher over there to be able to do something with some students over there for trees for Arbor Day. They do an Earth Week, which is usually about, I believe it's the week before we do the Arbor Day celebration, but we're gonna try and do both of them together. You guys may have heard already, I'm sure you have, that FAI has decided not to continue things like Winterfest and some of those events in the park. I'm bringing that up simply for the fact that it transitions me into a conversation with you as a council about moving forward with maybe a new position within the Parks Department. We have too many things going on at this point in time with Fourth of July. I would like to try and pick up the Winterfest as the town is concerned, concerts in the park, different events. So, as we move forward, and this is just to open the discussion, I don't have anything in paper right now. I'm working on that. I'm gonna work with Joe on kind of what a job description looks like. I've talked to Beth as far as my budget's concerned, and what that would look like. I believe she's gonna be here for the next council meeting, and she had told me that she would have something ready for you guys as far as an Excel spreadsheet of what that would look like and how we can make that happen, if we could make that happen. It's still not a done deal, but she was pretty optimistic about, I watch my budget pretty tightly, so she's pretty confident that we can, something we can make happen. We do already have it in the budget to hire a part-time person that was more of a, I guess, landscape, just kind of summer help type person. And since that was already in there, it kind of helped out with what we would need to actually make this a full-time position that would include, some of the things would be events, Winterfest, Fourth of July, but for me, more importantly than that, smaller events. One of our best events this year, and I know, did you come to the Santa thing with the library? I'm not sure how many people made it over there, but that was, in my opinion, one of the best events of the year that we had over there with Santa and the reindeer and silly safaris come in. We gave away free hot chocolate and popcorn. We had about three hundred people over there. It was quick and easy, isn't the right word, but it was minimal setup and work for a pretty good-sized return as far as having people over there. So, those are the kind of events that I would love to see the Parks Department start to get into, smaller, community-based events, whether it be classes or, you know, a Santa's mailbox for kids to drop off letters at Christmas. There's a lot of different things that we can do as far as that's concerned. One of the other things I would love from this person to do would be to take away the responsibilities of some of the things that the utility clerks are doing, i.e. the shelter house rentals, the community center rentals, all the dog park registrations and paperwork and that type of thing. That's all run through the utility office. The issue with that is, if there's an issue, they call me. And so, having somebody actually in the Parks Department have it run through the Parks Department, I think would be a much more streamlined process. It would take some work as far as, you know, making sure everything was set up, that we were able to get, you know, funds coming in to accounts. But the goal would be that this position, probably within a couple of years, would help out enough for revenue that it would essentially pay for itself with the things that we bring in on community events. There's gonna be certain events that you're not gonna make money on. Winterfest, Fourth of July, you're probably not gonna make any kind of money on that from a revenue standpoint, because it's for the community at that point in time. But there are some things that we can do, I think, from sponsorships to just fundraising events that I think would help, and this person would help get some more revenue generated within, within the parks. So, just be aware, again, if you have any questions, I can answer what I know tonight, but as we move forward, next, particularly in the next council meeting, I'll start talking a little bit more heavy about that. Shelterhouse in particular, it is shut down right now because of quote-unquote "construction" that will hopefully start here within the next two weeks. By the time that construction gets over, I will have hopefully had everything put together to approach you guys about raising the cost on the shelter house. We are very, very cheap right now as far as our facility is concerned, and with this new renovation, it's gonna be a really nice facility. I think we need to raise the price on that, and so I will have all the paperwork necessary. And so I will have all the paperwork necessary for you guys to look at and just kind of what the comps are as far as what other facilities are charging, that type of thing, as well as outdoor facilities. I still maintain that we need to do something with our athletic fields, especially with the work that's being put in over there with ball field lights and things like that. So we are missing some revenue. And as we move into next season, I would like to make sure that we have that in place, so. Any questions for me? I think you're pretty thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek?
Good evening. Derek Shelley for the record from the Police Department. At this time, I don't have anything to report. The chief's currently on vacation for a couple of days. Just so you do know, the yearly report from 2021, we're still waiting on some numbers from other agencies. Our part is complete. We just need those numbers to present to you guys. If the council asks any questions for me.
We have an officer at the academy right now, right?
We do.
Everything going well?
He's doing well out there, which I would hope he would be. No issues, and if we did, we'd be doing another hiring process. I'll put it quite bluntly.
Thank you.
I know you guys had a busy week last week. I had two car accidents in, what was that, Wednesday morning or Tuesday morning?
Yeah, right back-to-back at Maple and Broadway, and then one at Rice Drive Main. Yes, and went into Mr. Will's. But thank goodness everybody was okay, so. It's been a busy week, so. But our guys are, and gals are staying positive and pushing forward, so that's all we can ask of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
I don't have anything. What, you have questions for me?
Thank you. Public comment? Okay, Libby?
Oh, I've got something to say. As we know, I've proudly taken the place of our friend Robert on the wastewater, probably Waste Management District Board. We met, and they had an event this year called No Cold Feet, and they worked with the schools. And they had eight schools in the county that participated, and they collected over 2,000 pairs of shoes that they had donated and will hand out. That was the big news. And then I've given everyone the annual report for just some, you know, light reading tonight.
Go make sure to put Tony's in her mailbox.
Tonya, you'll have yours.
Oh, thank you for not forgetting me.
Oh, I think we're good. Yours in your mailbox. And if anyone needs an A-to-Z guide, just let me know. I can get more. That's all I've got going on, I think.
Any questions for Libby? Hopefully, they'll continue to do the events up here. And I appreciate your, I know we like to joke, but I appreciate your involvement.
Oh, it's so much fun.
2021 was the, we had the biggest turnout in Vernon County for those collection events.
Yeah, prices have gone up quite a bit. And so they are looking, she put bids out for contractors, you know, to collect those things, and it's doubled from last year. So she's going to, we switched the date. So hopefully, we'll get a cheaper bid that comes in. Everything's getting expensive these days.
Well, I see their budgets of these other counties are pretty very hefty.
They're one of the lowest in the state. Yeah. Thank you. Robert?
I just wanted to say that kudos to the street department for an awesome job. I think Aiden receives a thumbs up from folks traveling that are really awesome. So a lot of hard work went into that, and it's greatly appreciated.
That's all I have. Tony?
I don't have anything other than I'm sorry I haven't been there. I'm working on getting there, so I'll be there soon.
Feel better.
Becky?
I have a bunch. Everybody knows I've been concerned with this apartment complex. Basically, my biggest concern is the inconsistency. You know, they just keep throwing stuff at us, little bits at a time. This was approved on August 2020 for senior and workforce housing. And at that time, they told us it was 80% of the average area median income, up to 120%. That's what workforce housing is, 820%. It was supposed to cost $23 million for both apartment buildings. Now, they're only going to do the workforce housing, which they're still calling it, and it's going to be a $6,300,000 project. So it's not even half of what the two together was going to cost. Let me see what else my concerns are. They tell us it would be seniors, professionals, teachers, firemen, new college grads, no welfare, no subsidized housing. And I think that can be found on page 14 of the Madison Village PUD. At that time, it was called Madison Village. Now it's called Madison Loss LLC. It concerns me that they keep changing the names around. And if you look at the contract, you'll notice that there's a owner, there's a grantor, there's a, you know, it's no longer MVAH. It's Madison Loss LLC, and it's MVAH Hovin LLC instead of MVAH Partners. I don't know what the significance of all the name changes are, but it concerns me. Now it's become 80% of the area median income, which is the bottom of the workforce housing amount, 50% and 30%. 30% is extremely low. I have a packet for everybody that explains the different types of housing. I really hope you guys will look at that stuff. Let's see if there's anything else. There was 58 apartments. Looks like they're going to have to cut it down to 50, which is going to cut our tax base. Kind of concerns me too, because we're not going to make anything on this. We're not going to get any taxes on this for 15 years or very little. It's not even going to be enough to hire an additional police officer. And they're partnering with that Building and Impact, Impacting Communities, BIC. That is a 501(c)(3) federally recognized tax-exempt organization. That concerns me. And I told you guys once before, you really need to get in their website to work that. If you haven't done that, you should do it. I might have a short thing and hear about it. I have one of these for everybody. I want you guys just to take a look at it. I think they need to come back to the drawing board with exactly what they're proposing. We need to see a map. We need to know the incomes. I'm not saying I'm opposed to the whole thing, but we need to know what's going in there.
Okay. I'll get in touch with, where's the P?
He's online.
Oh, okay.
But then I'll be honest. I think that it needs to be stopped, re-presented, and presented for what they're telling, what they're saying is going to be, not what they had told us it's going to be. And Adam, I have had conversations. He knows I've been, I've had concerns from...
We have that document available to pull up if you...
I'm sorry?
That document, the link that you sent me?
Yeah.
Do you want us to pull that up?
Yeah, yeah, because I had asked him at one of the RDC meetings if he could tell me how many would be 30%, rented at 30% income, 60%, and 80%. He told me no, but we found out on the website. So it's out there. I don't know that it's accurate. They might make some changes to it. And I sent that to Adam.
And Joe or Alex, while Adam's pulling that up, can you tell us, give us a refresher on where does this project stand right now? Just in case the folks need a refresher.
He would be the guy to...
Well, it's like... It should say Madison Loss. So in terms of where the project is today, they have secured their zoning approvals. They've gotten their approvals for the site land, working on construction documents. The financing for the paper bond is complete, at least the paperwork. And approval is portion of that is done.
Right.
The only thing that's really outstanding is the developer is going to be coming back to the town, going to the Plan Commission and the council this month. They're looking for an amendment on the height of the building. And so more information will be provided, but I guess simply put, is they are looking to reduce some costs because of inflation without sacrificing the integrity of the project. And one way that they believe they can do that is by not doing a rubber membrane, flat, commercial-type roof. Rather, they'd like to do a pitch roof on the four stories. And so that would involve a height amendment to the PUD to do that. So they submitted paperwork, it filed for that, and we'll fully analyze that and present that later this month. But that's where they're at in terms of the approval process.
I think we're also still waiting to hear from the developer on their securing the financing, the actual money on their side before the paper bonds would issue from the town. So the approvals have been met, but we have not, the town has not issued those to MVAH. Because it's also, we want them to have the project financing and ready to go before the town takes it on.
Thank you. Is this the figure on?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
But you can see from that form, which was done 2021, that they have, that they're going to have 15, 80% of AMI apartments, 14 of 60%, and 14 at 50%, and then 15 at 30%. And on the other side, it shows you a number of bedrooms. And the projected cost is shown on that form. That form may be in your packet.
It looks like they've got it evenly divided, like 15, 14, 14, and 15. What is 30% of AMI in Hancock County? I don't know.
Pete's probably tells. Yeah, that's the figure.
30% of the AMI?
I know, that's why.
Well, the average area median income in Hancock County is $59,700. So if you have a calculator, take that times 30% and see what it is. I can do one.
And that's for one person or two?
It's per unit is what I'm taking. I don't think that's ever been specified.
30% of...
You can do that in your head, I guess.
Just so you're aware, this is Pete with MVAH Partners. I am on, just in case you are interested, I'm happy to try and help answer any questions. I was told there might be some further conversation and questions tonight, so I joined to be able to help if I can. So if you would like me to do so in any way, let me know, and I'll do my best.
I'm just curious. So you said 58,000?
$59,700 is that.
That's per household usually, or is that...
That's the average...
Income look.
The area median income for Hancock County. So that would be right in the middle, would be my guess. And 30% of that is $17,910. Pete, are they still saying that the rents on these apartments are going to be from $650 to $850 a month?
The rents have slightly changed. They've gone up a little bit. Since we've been delayed a little bit, the new AMI targets have come out, and rent increasing, just like inflation has been increasing. So there are, the rents are up a little bit. And you are correct in that there is a mix. All of the units are 80% AMI and under. The tax credit program requires a few things out of you when you apply for the funds. Number one, you have to average at least 60% AMI. So if you do 80% units, you have to match those with some lower AMI units. And then also, part of the state's requirements is a requirement that a portion of your units are set at the 30% AMI bar. So the goal is to create some diversity in who we can serve, all the way up to 80% AMI. So with the fact that our original plan was for 58 units, with the fact that we're needing to reduce it to 50 units, we will end up with 13, or with me, 13 30% AMI units. And we wind up with 13, 80% AMI units. And then the rest are balanced in the middle. And these are just requirement bars that we're obligated to the state. Everything does have to be 80% AMI and under. We have to average 60% AMI. And the state then does require a certain percentage of your units to be at 30% AMI. And the whole goal is you can serve a broad with, bandwidth of residents. And it looks like our rents are upwards of, more like $850 now for two beds and $750 for one beds for our units. And then obviously, depending on what your AMI target is, where you fall, you would potentially pay a slightly different rent. At 80% AMI, which is our target, allows us to serve families upwards of, or with me here, about $65,000 in incomes and below. So yes, some of the units do sit below that bar, at a lower AMI bar. But there's a variety of unit types.
Hang on for a second. I'm doing some real quick. So if I did my math right, I'm just rounding it up to 60,000. So 30% would be 18,000. Then at 50%, it would be 30,000. 36 would be for the 60, and then the 80 would be $48,000 a year for these people. If you combine all those together, the total income of the whole building coming to online, I haven't totaled it up, but it's roughly $2 million in amount of people's income that live there. And $2 million is a lot of money to buy local groceries, local money here in town. But I haven't totaled it up yet. I'm not... Does that figure in your mind, work? Because these two together, and these two together, so 2 million. And revenue will be coming to this town with people. And you only talk about how many, one, there's 30, 60 units, right?
50, 50 units.
Well, I'm just rounding. I'll make it easy.
So you're saying the 2 million is their...
Their gross income is $2 million inside that unit.
Which has to... Rent, utilities...
And it's in a small, compact...
Yeah.
2 million spread out all over Fortville, but then you've got it spread out in just one building as a footprint. It's just something to think about.
Yeah, but they're not going to be spending that $2 million in Fortville Dodge Rent and Utilities.
You can't say that, though, because look at, look at the low-income housing we already have. Look at the rentals that we have and the people that live there. They do come out on Main Street and they do spend their money. They just have to spend it differently. They can't come out every single night, but they do have money.
I'm not saying they're not ever going to spend.
Right, but that's what you were insinuating, but we can't say where they're getting, like, maybe their family gives them gift cards. Maybe, you know, maybe they are coming out, but we have no idea. Maybe they babysit on the side and don't have to report that income, you know? Maybe they make things and sell them. You have no idea.
My daughter would fall within this. She just graduated with a college degree from I U. And her first job in research was $45,000 a year. She was paying, she moved back home to pay down her debt, but she's paying $1,200 a month in rent in Indianapolis. So it's, if we can attract people like that, that are educated and they're going to move up. And I, I don't know. When I, when I first started out, I didn't make much money either. So let's think about the tune again. But then what I'm going to do is I'm going to digest, because I'm, I'm glad you brought that to my attention. Because I never broke down what the, what the 30 and the 50 and the 60 and the 80 really meant in, in raw numbers until tonight. And then what was the estimated tax on that was $40,000 a year taxes for that building? Or has it gone down now?
I have to recall.
Okay.
Pete, this is Robert Holland.
Yes.
I know that Adam gave us just a real brief synopsis of where you guys are at. Since you're on the, on the line, would you mind giving us an update as the status of where this all stands?
Absolutely. And one thing I will say is, is I was glad to, glad to hear your chamber in there today. And one of the things that we will be doing as part of our, start of our effort, um, once we close and start, is actually joining and becoming a member of the Chamber of Converse. And we really do think that that is our conduit to who we want to serve with this development. We are wanting and our goal target audience is serving the workforce, working in Fortville, surrounding Fortville. Folks right now, a lot of them have to commute into the area because they're not able to find options or quality options in, in Fortville. So one of the things that we, we've said in our application to the state is we were going to join the, the chamber and, and also make units available through the chamber, really trying to get the word out to local employers, local employees, so that they're the ones that have the opportunity to take advantage of these new housing units. So I just wanted to, to say that real quick before I stepped in. Where we are with the process, just as we were finishing up the TIF, you may remember in our, our last meetings and we're, we're finalizing the TIF and getting that approved, there was some discussion about, you know, COVID related cost inflation and some of the challenges and pressures. That's putting on a development as a whole. The state funded in this funding round around 22 developments, I think it was, or somewhere around 20 developments. And thus far, at least last time I checked was a few weeks ago, none of them from this year had closed. They're all experiencing very similar challenges. And the state is helping developers and development teams work through those challenges in different ways, depending on where and what the, how big the economic challenge is. So with that, just as we were finalizing the TIF, I think we had even made mention of this potential reduction in units. And we even, I think it's in dialogue to how we can approve that in a way that we wouldn't have to come back if that change had occurred. Because at that point, the state was indicating to us that they would prefer to reduce the unit count to get the economics in alignment. So it is anticipated an eight unit reduction will do so. So since then, right around the beginning of the year, we had made a formal application to the state to amend our tax credit award to reduce it by the eight units. With that, obviously we had to do some redesign. At that point, at the end of the year, we were permitted and really ready to close. And if, if cost wasn't in line, we would have already closed the development. Really, the only thing we're trying to do is get I C D A's approval of the change. We expect that within seven days. Simultaneously, we've been redesigning, obviously having to redo the building to cut out the eight units, add the gabled roof in. That allowed us to do above ground detention instead of underground detention. So our site plan is, is now been modified, our building plans have now been modified. And those will be resubmitted for, for new permit approval. Our hopes are, as the state will approve the, the changes to the plan amendment over the next week or so, our general contractor is then revising the numbers to coincide with the eight unit reduction. We hope that that's done by the end of this, on end of the month, with hopes that we can have all the revised drawings permitted again by early March with the hope of closing in mid-March. I will admit, in, in the 20 years of doing development, this construction world that we're in right now is as tough as any I've been in. And that includes the economic challenges of 2008. Right now, construction's really out of control in a lot of ways. But we're working through it, the state's helping us work through it. And with these revised changes, we're bringing back through the town. We'll be back in line and hopefully it will close here within 30 to 60 days.
So a fair question to ask, what happens to your plans if those, if the approvals aren't approved?
There's really two parts to that. So if the state denied our approval, which I would be highly unlikely at this point, they've really kind of fostered us to this point. So we're pretty confident that'll be approved. The fifth, the unit reduction to 50 units, I do not believe is anything negative to the P V, P U D. I think the only thing that we're asking for that technically requires an approval, and Adam, feel free to step in if I'm wrong, is the height of the building. And we're asking for a, a gabled roof instead of the flat roof. And it is twofold. Number one, that rubber membrane roof is one of the biggest material challenges in construction right now. It's on a nine to 12 month back order. And it's really just a fundamental problem to get it physically, as well as because of that, its price is kind of exponentially. So the gabled roof is a way to really create the same building with, with materials that are much more readily available. And in some ways, I think during the process, some liked the residential look better, that it gave it a little more of a residential feel having the, the gabled roof on it. So from our perspective, that's really, I think that's all at question in, in the approval. It would make construction more challenging if that was denied. But ultimately, I think we had confirmed your fire department didn't have any issues with the height. The floor heights are still all the same, it's simply just gable roof. It is, it's increasing the height of the overall height of the building. So we're hopeful we can get that through. It is a savings, cost savings, it's kind of crucial to the development. But if, if it weren't approved, I guess we would still have to look what, what we need to do to, to fill that final void and get the right material in there.
I appreciate your update, Pete, and being on the call.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
I was, I was thinking, because they'd already looked at the air conditioning units being on top now, but, you know, a gable roof, yeah, that's, so we'll have to have all those drawings too. Okay.
Can I ask one question, just to keep it on the forefront? Where, where do we stand on the senior housing? I know that was.
Yeah, the application round, and the next application round is July. The state just came out with its new Q A P that will govern that round. That'll be finalized over the next month or so. The seller is willing to give us another go at it with senior development. So we do anticipate submitting for the senior development in the next round.
Another question, what's the footprint on that, that whole area? But how much acreage? I'm figuring $2 million is income there. What's the acreage of that?
1.6 acres.
12.6 acres?
Yeah. I mean, I will say this too, for those who might be interested, and I'm happy to screen share, and I could show you this if you're interested. So when Fort Ben redeveloped, starting in around 2008, 2009, for familiar there, right there by the, the park and the golf course and Ivy Tech, they had 80, 90 acres. Well, I might be exaggerating that. And, and our chunk, I think it was more like 40 acres. There was another 40 elsewhere in the Fort, Fort Ben area. And we were the very first development in that 40 acre area when they, when they started to revitalize the base. And it was 50 units, the exact same building. Exact same building, I'm not able to screen share, but I'm happy to, if you guys want me to, that we're talking about building here. The only difference between that building and this building is, is this one will have a fourth story versus the one in, in Lawrence has three stories. Since that development, all of the surrounding area has been developed. And that, that includes over 75 units of single family homes that are averaging around $375,000 a pop, literally right across the street from us. And two $40 million multi-hundred unit market rate apartment developments. And this is all stuff that, you know, has occurred after our development. I guess my point there is, is, you know, our, our development is quality, it's made with quality materials. It's everything you're expecting a building to be in materials and finishes. But in addition to that, there's, there's real opportunity for it to attract various other components. We do agree the area needs senior housing, the area needs market rate apartments, it needs a variety of housing types. We are part of what's needed in the area, but not all of what's needed in the area. And I, I think you will find the other types of development being attracted to, to and surrounding us. We do have a market study. It shows over 1,300, there with me, I'm going to pull this up just so I say the right number.
Pete, just so you know, Adam, sharing the Google.
Great.
Screen views.
Oh, I'm screen sharing it saying host disabled.
Adam, show me here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So yeah, there's a $400,000, uh, single family homes to the north of One Penrose. To the east of Penrose, a $30 million, 270 unit high end apartment development. To the south of it, a brand new, 300 unit, $35 million apartment development. And all that's occurred after One Penrose was built. In the market area, which is Fortville, and it does include some of the county out to McCordville, stretches down. So it's a, market area is normally around a three to four mile ring around the site. There are 1,200 households that meet the definition, meaning they are within the bandwidth of our 80% A M I targeting and under. There's a big need out there and right now, there's only one comp in the area. And that is the Village Apartments at Fortville, which is from 1993, it's only 40 units. And it's been 100% occupied with 18 household waitlist. Those actually target 50% AMIs, it has some lower targeting. So we're actually going to open up the income bandwidth from that property. But you got over 1,200 households in the area in need of the housing. And right now, only 40 housing units available to, to service those needs.
Yeah, I go over there for lunch, so I'm going to meet the chamber over there. And it is, it's a building area over there. The lunch crowd is, is, is big in that area, but that's, they got Fort Benjamin Harris over there too. And all this project's been going on for the last 20 years when, when Bob Stare was the mayor, not Bob, Bob, after Bob Stare, it was.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah, so. Snyder was the next mayor, they got that 56 and worked with Fort Benjamin Harris to, to start this project. When the Fort Benjamin Harris decided they were leaving, and this is what they developed and that, their comprehensive plan.
Anything else on this?
I don't have anything else now.
This is for looking at it. I just wanted to point out that these houses over here are very similar to what's going to be in Northwest Fortville. The David Weasley product. The Davis project's already done and they're all, they sold everything over there.
Yes.
And then Arbor's done now completely. And I know, see, I have talked to one of the homeowners over there, they had, but fiber board because they couldn't get vinyl on those last two units by the door, by the, so they've got a nice fiber board on theirs. Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, Ken, Pete.
Yeah, thank you. I'll certainly be happy to come back for updates and otherwise we'll be bringing that amendment through your process and we'll see you as we work our, our ways through there.
Can I get a motion to approve, to sign vouchers?
Tony have anything?
She's not, Tony just said that she was.
No, I, no, no, she didn't have anything. Okay, I have, I don't have anything.
I'll make the motion to approve a signed vouchers.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Aye, sound it, thank you.
Make the motion, we adjourn at 8:05.
I second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Aye, sound it, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Thanks, babe.
Yep.
I said, yeah, this is. Whatever used to be another.
It's been handed over to the insurance.
I'm not buying.
So.
Yes, I didn't think so.
Yeah, the insurance carry, I was just getting called.